August fifteenth, a little past five thirty. Let's start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Elwood.
Present.
Commissioner Bittman.
Here.
Commissioner Coon.
Here.
Commissioner Graves. Absent. Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Dumas, present. Mayor Keys.
Present.
Oh, one, present, sir.
Okay, I'll declare a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Second amendment motion. Second. Jerry second amendment. Any discussions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda approved. We have no minutes, we have no reports, we have full business. Uh, when we, uh, adjourned the last planning commission meeting, we tabled the vote on the resolution to accept or reject the, um, request for rezoned, um, property on the island that everybody's aware of. And the question, the reason for tabling it was to get a legal opinion on a, um, an older deed that Mr. Joffrey had for the property, um, which stated that it could be eventually zoned R1, R2, or R3 um, at the developer or owner's discretion, that the decision would be made at the time of construction and, um, there was one other thing.
There was text at the bottom, and they've talked about, uh, the adherence to our local law.
Um, yeah, that, uh, there was two, two more things. One, that, uh, until such a decision was made, it would be zoned R1, which is what the city and the zoning it has, and what the county also has the zone that for taxes. And then, uh, there was a statement on the same deed that was said to the effect that it was subject to, uh, any, um, zoning ordinances or regulations that were in force at the time or in the future. So we wanted a legal opinion on that, and the short answer from our, um, attorney is that there are no rights in these deeds that combine the city of Alhoub. So the simple answer is no, we're not bound by that deed, so we can vote accordingly. So with that said, um, we're not going to open it up for public discussion again because, uh, the rules of the hearing state that wants the hearing is closed. Everyone's had their opportunity to speak. So now it's just a matter of the planning commission voting on the, uh, on the resolution. Um, I will open it up to, um, commissioners to make comments if they want to before we move to the vote.
I'd like to start.
Sure.
In the, uh, order, or excuse me, the resolution we're considering, I took from the text, the, uh, conditions, uh, criteria that we might consider. So I think it's prudent that we go through those one at a time and say yes or no, you know, almost whoever offered an opinion. So that when we get to the point of deciding, are we going to deny it or accept it, we'll know in direction to go.
So that the, the vote is clear. It's either clear to accept or clear to reject.
Yes, the process would be that we'll have our discussion and get a, a sense of where we're going, and then we have to modify this document to say that we're going to approve it or deny it, and then we'll approve this resolution so we have a formal decision.
Okay. Um, all right, anyone else want to make a comment? We'll come back to that.
Sure.
To go through. Before we move on to the vote. Anyone else want to make a comment?
Other than I don't understand what you just said. Well, I mean, we're going to take a vote on, on some points that you are raising.
No, from, I, I copied this, whereas this section, this criteria from our current regulation. And so that we demonstrate that we haven't done something arbitrary or capricious, we should go through this criteria and decide, does it match, is it fit, is it not? And then from that discussion, that analysis or evaluation, we can decide we're probably going to approve this. If that's the case, then we need to modify the resolution to say it's approved. If we're going to generally deny it, then we should modify the text to say that we're denying it, and then we'll vote on that resolution.
He's got the warning to vote, accept it.
Yeah, but one thing I wanted to bring up, I think it came up last time, is is keep in mind, this type of situation is going to come up again and again, and I think we need to each think about how we want to deal with it. I mean, when I'm talking about situations, the idea of somebody's got a property and they think it'll sell better if it's sold differently, and we really don't know what the future of it is, the same way we would if somebody came here with a plan and said, this is what I want to build. You know, and that's the only thing I want to keep in mind. I'm not, no opinion, I just want to, let's keep that in mind. This is not the first time or the last time we've had the same situation. Some of that documentation that went with the proposal, there was a reference in there at one point. It said it would stay R1 until such time is determined. What's next to me then, trying to figure out, I feel, I guess, a little better about is what I'm saying is if we had, I have a sole contingent upon, and this is what they want to do with it, I, I'd feel better about somebody actually saying, I own the property and this is what I want to do with it. But at least we have that. I, I mean, as likely as not, rezone R3, somebody can buy it, said I want to put a house on it, then that's a fact, and sell it on R1. And I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just saying that same situation's going to come up, whether it's a commercial or whatever. I, I don't know how often we want to deal with.
Are they? The, I get kind of confused with what we're doing and how it relates to the, you know, we're used to dealing with R1, R2, and R3, and C1, C2 on the, uh, Sid. And that's for assessment purposes, and yes, too. So if, if we change this to an R1 to an R3, does it, that change the assessment then?
No, would, would it? If they have a category for R3, uh, if they have an assessment category.
Well, you know, there's, there's, they've got so much confusion with, you know, mo- multiple units, you know, they, you, you got a townhouse over here that's R3, and it's got three units in it, and it's got one R3 assessment, you got three people with three different, uh, deeds, and that's the dumbest thing.
No, it's one of the reasons why we're here, so that that doesn't happen forward.
Uh, so, I mean, if, I mean, I might, my problem looking at this is if we zone it R3, are they going to put three separate buildings and have three separate owners, or are they going to have one building and one owner? And, I mean, we're just compounding the problem.
I would think, I can't speak for Iced, but I would think that they would, the lot, this is one lot, it has three structures on it, it's one assessment. How they handle and collect the, the money is a Iced issue.
No, it isn't. It, it, it's a, it's a never-ending issue because it, it doesn't work.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if, if you're going to have three buildings on it, then you gotta have three separate deeds and lots.
Well, there's, there's nothing saying he has to have three separate buildings. You can have one building with three things, or three units.
I know, but you got separate owners for them, and you got.
Yeah.
And it just, I hate to be comparative.
You know, my, my comment is kind of related to everything everybody was saying. If we zone it R3 right now, then we are bound to let anybody build anything that's, that's a permitted use of an R3 lot in our zoning ordinance, which could be a, uh, a duplex, multifamily, townhouse condo, a triplex, a quadplex, a church, a library, or a school. Those are the permitted uses for R3 residential in our current zoning ordinance. If we zone it, if we, if we change the zoning to R3 right now, we, we open ourselves up to having to approve a, uh, project that fits into one of those categories. So we, we really, we, we're kind of giving up our control over, you know, whether or not what gets built on that property is compatible with, with, uh, with the other units or something like that. If we zone it R1, or if we leave it zoned R1, and then somebody comes along with plans and says, this is what I want to build, I want to change to R3 so that I can build this, then we know what we're approving. We're not just approving the blank check. That's my concern about changing it to R3, um, without knowing what the intent is for the property.
What was, what was the resolution we would have voted on last week at the end of that year?
The same one we're considering tonight.
We never voted, though.
I don't know, but we, we're having a discussion about something signed along the board. I didn't hear a motion to approve or deny.
We're.
We're, we're in the section of our agenda that says deliberations on adhering comments. Are you thinking that's out of order? Because we're not to the point where we're considering the resolution yet, or what it's going to look like, we're still bowling over what we heard in the public meeting.
Well, I, I'll, I'll comment and say what I heard is a guy asking to be R3 because it, uh, to, I guess enhances the chance to sell it, and I heard several comments against that.
Dan, a moment ago you said that church would be permitted in R3? I just pulled it up and it doesn't say it said, excuse me, on the right table. R3. You're right, church is permitted. Okay.
Church will have our envy. There's several things that are conditional, but that still, that would require a hearing and issuing a uh, separate permits, so we still have some control over the destiny of that decision. But if we go ahead and just change the zoning now, then, uh, then we, we kind of open ourselves up to letting people do anything that's allowed on that table.
Within the limits of our, the rest of our building codes.
Right.
I mean, if, if someone wanted to build a school there, because it's permitted, they'd have to do it within the size of thirty-five hundred or seven thousand square feet, and they'd have to have adequate parking. It may not be a big enough lot to do all those things.
Be a really little school.
Right. Exactly. So even though it's permitted in R3, it's a very small parcel, a small lot.
I'm more concerned that somebody would want to throw up some cheap condos so that they could rent them out, and then five years down the road, it'll look like, uh, cheap rentals.
Well, currently it's an R1, so somebody could build a cheap house and do the same thing. It's currently rated, it's R1 rated.
Yeah. That's true.
They also, if they go build a house, we still have to approve it, so.
All right, there's no other, any other comments? Why don't we move on to going through the resolution just to, uh, like an instant, to decide whether we should modify the resolution to be accept or modify the resolution to be reject.
Okay, so one of the criteria in our planning and zoning is, is it consistent of the proposal with a comprehensive plan? And you may recall, our comprehensive plan is to do the best that we can to align with the current governance. That's basically all our comprehensive plan says. So generally, it does, is this, is this request consistent with that plan?
Well, the problem right now with that particular property is that I'm not comfortable.
Right.
There is no comprehensive plan.
There, there isn't. Try to pull up the ordinances, pick the number of the regulations or not. Do I need to?
I, I don't.
Okay. So we're, we're kind of iffy on that one?
Yeah, I mean, there.
Okay.
It's simply, you know, the fact that there, that there is no person requesting the, the change has no comprehensive plan other than sell property.
Is it consistent, consistency of the proposal with the purpose of these regulations? You know, the purpose of regulation is that if someone wants to change something, we have public hearings, so the public has a chance to hear what's going on and know what's going on and give their feedback. You may disagree with that? Okay. C, compatibility of the proposal with the zoning uses and character of the surrounding area. If someone wanted to build a fourplex on that property, whether it be strung out in one level or a two-story, two over two, would that be consistent with the surrounding area?
We have to see the plan.
Well, we're not approving the plans, we're approving the use.
But we can't answer that question whether it's compatible until we see the, the plan on what the.
He's probably talking about tablebed land, but I would argue that that property should be compared to the, uh, property of the Eagle Room, which, what I understand is not developed.
Is it, is it compatible with the sewage pump across the street and the, and the Marina beyond it? I mean, that's a joint property as well. So how do I answer C? We don't know, or it's a yes or a no? I'll go on to D then. Indeed, suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted without the proposed zoning map table amendment. So it's been R1. Is it suitable to have an R3 in this R1 area? We have that in several places. To extent which approval of the proposed rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby property, including but not limited to any impact on property value, traffic, drainage, visual impairment, odor, noise, light vibration, hours of operation, or any restriction to the normal and customary use of the affected property.
Well, I do have concerns, uh, if they do put an outside family. We, that ingress and egress will be very difficult.
And it kind of goes back to my original comment. Unless we know what's going on here, what's planned to go on here, we can't answer that question. I mean, because some of the things allowed in R3 might be, and some of the things allowed in R3 might not be. How do you answer that question without a plan for what's going in there?
You wait it as is, and then when somebody tries to, uh, free plans.
Then you'll reason, you know, down. Kind of where we started.
Well.
I would say we can't answer that question, though. The question is probably, uh, it's a question.
Ken, do you have an opinion? I've got, I've heard two, three noes. It's not suitable.
Now, we don't really need to vote. These, these are the.
I know we're not voting, but trying to come up with a measurement to see which way we're going to proceed.
This, yeah, this is, this is, uh, influence people to vote.
Well, and part of the, yeah, part of the resolution is, we have a global reason for denial.
Uh, exactly.
I've been here thirty years, and there's been, oh, there's been open green space, and that's what I'm accustomed to. So there's a lot of good reason, though. I know, but you're asking your opinion. Uh, so, as my, I, uh, not knowing what we're, what we're talking about, I mean, it's the most, whether it was fitting or not, that's why I think we, we need to know what's going in there relative to. Uh, we've already been there, of course. We're trying to come up with, well.
Yeah, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or zoned, as zoned, as well as its owning at the time of the purchase, the applicant, what's speaking to us. It's been zoned a certain way for a period of time. If it's been there a long time compared to a short time, that might have an impact on whether it's a valid reason to change it. Uh, and I think relatively, it's been there a long time. It's been R1 since it was plotted. It's a lot.
It's never been anything other than R1.
So because it's been R1, it's been developed, is that an argument that if it was something else, it might get developed? And the concern that I hear is you're thinking it'll get developed in something you don't like. Rather than something that we all would like.
Well, it's, it's a very highly visible piece of property, and absolutely, it goes in there, it needs, we need, it needs to be right.
Wrong thing on that property could, could affect property values.
Yeah, it'd be a, it'd be a real detriment, and I, 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 I just, I ain't going there.
True.
Impacted the proposed development on community facilities and services, including those related to utilities, drainage, park, open space, fireplace, emergency medical services. I remember having some conversations or hearing comments that there's concern about the sewer treatment, but that pipe that gets pumped across the bridge and fall off the island, so putting four more residents there should not impact, we have lots of lots that are going to be developed on the island yet.
The only issue is getting the sewer through the lot, that's, that's the builder's problem.
There's going to be significant cost and. That's not, that's not our.
But that, and that, that, that situation doesn't change whether it's R1 or R3, so it's really immaterial.
But the point that Bar made about the egress, I mean, if you got, uh, this Lynn described, maybe a, a two-deck, four-unit that could be potential eight cars marked there. Backing out, that hill coming down there, I mean.
I, I guess I, I looked at the property to describe what a hundred by thirty-five foot structure would fit. Um, it's probably going to have to be a shared parking area, a shared driveway, you know, just because of the shape of the lot. So, and that driveway would probably exit on the part that's nearest the street level, which is not too far from the intersection getting into Table Rock Lake. So it's not like it's on a blind corner. So, but again, we don't have formal plans. We just have a speculation of what it wants to do with it.
No, he wants to sell it. He didn't have a plan for it.
Okay, so on the A, I put a question mark on my score sheet as well, just to, whether it's consistent with the proposed plan, or whether it's a comprehensive plan, not knowing. But since I marked generally an okay, C I didn't mark, E is generally an okay, E is four noes, and the F is okay, and my, the general consensus on G, is it going to be okay? Okay, all right. So of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven criteria, I have one, two, three, four okays, two questions, and one no. So it's pretty close that it would fit, that we would draft the resolution toward okaying it and then vote on that resolution.
Except that all A through G aren't created equal.
I, yeah, I agree.
So, so that would be, that would be the original, or the original vote we would have taken was for or against.
The resolution that we draft, that we modify.
Well, that's what we need to know.
So, you know, we can, and the way it could go, we could draft the resolution, say we're going to approve it, and it gets voted down.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we should do it.
If we voted to deny it, because it's clear to us to deny it, and it gets denied, then is it approved? I haven't done this before. I didn't know how to draft it for you guys.
If, if we draft it to, as a resolution to approve the request, and it doesn't get sufficient votes to pass, then that constitutes rejection.
Okay, and then with that, then we are obligated by our planning regulations to write a letter to the property owner of why we rejected it. And I don't think we can do that in private. I think we can do that publicly. So we'll spend the rest of the time coming up with the reasons it's rejected.
I think we're hurt with this rating.
The, the primary reason is that the, the decision to rezone something should be made with a comprehensive plan of what's going to be done with the property. And there is no comprehensive plan as to what is going to be done.
It's not right to enter, but we'll, we'll take it up.
Sure. I'm going to have to get the text. Obviously, I have to print this someplace else, and the other plans, I'll just get the text right, I won't worry about the color. Okay, so I changed the title to approve it, took the denial off. And this text will all be okay.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't like that whole idea of, let's draft to approve and then vote it down, that's silly.
But anything that we add, that's, that's, that's just how we do it.
Yeah, and we, I, we, I think we're, we're supposed to make all motions in an affirmative, whether we disagree with it or not. So this resolution, like a motion, we made in the affirmative to approve it, then it may not get approved.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not, that's.
So we can't, we can't draft a resolution to deny this.
I would, when I did, when I drafted this, this way or that way, I thought, this doesn't seem right. So we're going to draft it in a positive and vote on it. Okay.
Move to approve or to vote, to vote, whatever. I will now, I will now entertain a motion to approve resolution. What's the number?
Um, R twenty-three dash six.
R twenty-three dash six. Make a motion to approve the resolution. Terry made a motion, the resolution. Do I have a second?
A second, then.
Ken seconds it. Is there any other discussions? I will move to a roll call.
Um, do I need to read it?
You can read it.
You're like stumbling around in the dark, so.
Well, we are, because I don't know what I'm doing. Sorry.
No, no, do any of us first.
Okay.
Resolution HI CPC R twenty-three dash six, a resolution approving resuming application RA twenty-three oh six twenty-seven. Requesting rezoning of UVL one twenty-eight dash one dash two for more on single-family residential to R3, multifamily residential for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the property is described herein as Arkansas County of Carroll, City of Holiday Island, block two, block one, under one twenty-eight, also known as UVL one twenty-eight dash one dash two, bordered on the north by Shields Drive, on the east by Woodsdale Drive, and the west by UVL one twenty-eight parcel A, and on the south by Leftwood Creek or Table Rock Lake. Planted June, July twenty-seven, two thousand nine, filed with the Carroll County Western District Pla- cabinet date, slide twenty-two one D on April thirteen, twenty-eleven. Whereas UVL one twenty-eight dash one dash two was transferred by warranty deed on or about March sixth, twenty-twelve, with the deed restriction stated apart, the property is to be zoned R1. And whereas UVL one twenty-eight one dash two was transferred by warranty deed on or about December fifteen, twenty-twenty, to the current owner, Michael Joffrey. My first wrong. And whereas UVL one twenty-eight one two was zoned R1, a single-family residential by the city of Holiday Island, with the. And whereas U V L one twenty-eight one two was zoned R one, a single family residential by the city of Holiday Island, with the original text of the planning and zoning regulations, zoning map table were adopted. By ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash six on October fourth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Michael Joffrey requested by application for his own, U V L one twenty-eight dash one dash two from R one, single family residential to R three, multi-family residential. And whereas the H I C P C has considered the criteria for approval of the rezoning applications through. Though not all the criteria is given equal consideration by the city planning commission in reaching a decision, the criteria considered including. But was not limited to the following, and we've gone through those A through G on the list. Whereas the H I C P C, now having developed amendments to the zoning map. The zoning map table to adopt or recommend is provided the required notification pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two. By letter to the, you read the spring school board on July eighteen, twenty-three. In pursuit to ACA fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two by publishing a public hearing notice in Carroll twenty-two's July eighteen, twenty-three edition. And whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two, the H I C P C has conducted a public hearing on the matter of adopting and recommending amendments to zoning map and zoning map table on August eight, twenty-three. To your public comments, and whereas the H I C P C now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to recommend to the city council, the R three zoning of U V L one twenty-eight dash one dash two. Now being resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, section one of the R, the rezoning application RA. Twenty-three oh six twenty-seven requesting changing the zoning for property, U V L one twenty-eight one two, AKA one Shields Drive from R one. Single family residential R three shall be approved. Section two, pursuant to. Six four twenty-two, the H I C P C adopts amendments to zoning map and zoning map table for the property. U V L one twenty-eight one two for the city of Holiday Island. In section three, a copy of the resolution shall be delivered to the city. Recorder treasure pursuant to planning zoning regulation sixteen, section twenty-eight oh four, for consideration and continuance of the process of rezoning the property. Pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two, the H I C P C certifies that these amendments, zoning map and zoning map table, should be adopted by the city council of Holiday Island in time of manner passed to approve this date.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll poll vote.
Commissioner Elwood?
No.
Commissioner Thune?
No.
Commissioner Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Graves absent. Commissioner Mills?
Name.
Commissioner Thune is yes. Mayor?
No.
The resolution fails.
Okay, we will notify Mr. Joffrey accordingly.
Okay, is it appropriate that I can take the comments from the recording, the minutes, and draft a letter and give it to you for approval, or does everyone need to see that? To make sure it's drafted properly.
I don't know. I think we've made our comments, so.
Okay.
Do we all need to see it before?
I'll draft a letter, circle it, circulate to the mayor. If you have comments, go back to him. Okay.
All right. Moving on on the agenda. There's uh no new business, public comments, ring on it, time limit, anybody? Hearing none?
Yes. It sounds like to me that.
Can you, can you go to the podium, put the mic on, state your name for the record?
Uh, my own Alan Miller. I live at on Holiday Island, and I think your instincts are correct. Um, I think you did it the way in which seems to me quite appropriate. And my background is almost five decades in real estate, and I've done some development. So I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
I have Bob DeSousa. I live on Bandy Drive on the island. And uh, I guess going forward in the future, this is going to come back up. Um, and I just want the board to keep in mind, you know, I do a lot of boating. I know there's golfers here, there's boaters, everyone's got their special interests. But I got to tell you, when you're coming down the channel and you look up at Holiday Islands. That, those parcels right there, that's like a crown jewel of the island. And, you know, we have plenty of low-cost housing and affordable housing throughout Holiday Island. You know, the island itself is kind of special. And that is one crown jewel, in my opinion. On a sunny day, when that grass is green and you're coming around the corner. It's as every bit of the crown jewel is when you're driving in the main entrance and you go by the country club. And you've got the spread of grass and the open green spaces there. So I hope that the board will keep that in mind in the future, because this is not going to be the last time you're discussing this. I can be sure of that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Right, scheduling our next meeting is September twelfth. And we have another public hearing scheduled for that.
Our next regular meeting will be on the twelfth, following a public hearing that will have a six P M, so the meeting will be after that hearing.
What's the public thing?
I put it on the website, but it's a, it's a a property on State Line. An individual wants to change the zoning from C two to a C four, so he can build a building and put in a both maintenance and sales operation. And it'll also require a conditional use permit, because that's not permitted in our C four, so it's two-fold.
But if the resolution passes in the next meeting, we won't be members anymore.
Don't know. We're talking about September twelfth meeting of the Holiday Island City Planning Commission.
Whoever that is.
Where the membership is. I may not be here.
I will not be here for sure on the twelfth, but I may be able to join with me.
Okay, no special meeting scheduled at this time, no workshops scheduled at this time. So any other comments from the commissioners? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have motion and second to adjourn. Any discussion? Call the favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Turn.